Okay, six o'clock when we call this meeting. Start with the prayer and then the pledge. Heavenly Father, we just pause just to thank you for this beautiful weather you've given us. We're just hope it stays on several more weeks. I see the farmers, they're busy taking off the crops and it's a great time of year. I just pray for the wisdom to everybody around this table to make the right decision for our citizens. And I pray for our citizens, the ones that are sick, the ones that are lonely. Bring somebody in their life for healing for them. And all these things I pray through Christ, amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, invincible of liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. And remind you to turn your phones off or airport mode or what do they call it? So roll call.
Bart.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Clipper.
Here.
Egley.
Here.
And Beverly Saxon.
Yeah, before you, the September 18th regular council meeting minutes. Any corrections? Make a motion to approve as soon as second roll call.
Egley?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Epstein.
Before you the bills, any questions?
What's the Baldwin Group Mayor's court support?
For the software.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Sorry, actually, can I ask, what is the contract addendum for the water tower? I'm sorry, what's the contract addendum for the water tower?
Overmeyer eleven thousand.
What do we add?
The vinyl work on the tower itself.
Why was that an addendum?
It was added when we had to have it rebid. It's an addendum.
So we had it, we issued a contract and it was over and then we had added an addendum to the contract?
By the time it went to bid, our pricing went crazy. And so nobody could bid using the first engineer's report, so we had to have it redone on both the Oregon big projects. It's been sitting there waiting.
But I guess why is it labeled as an addendum?
It's an addendum to the original contract.
Wouldn't that just be the original contract? Because if it was, we went out to bid because it was too high, maybe we awarded the contract.
Yeah, I'm not following either. So we had an engineer's estimate, we bid it. We had to rebid it so there wouldn't have been a contract the first time. Then when we rebid it, we entered into a contract with whoever was the winning bidder.
I know the engineering fees had also went up on top of the.
That's like six months, I had to redo it and charge us eighty-five hundred.
So it's an addendum for redoing the bid documents?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
So it was eleven thousand dollars to go to rebid.
Yes. To redo the bid packets and all that stuff.
We didn't revise any scope, correct? That was literally just for that.
Did you say they added the vinyl?
Yeah.
Display or the words?
Yeah, with the logo.
Oh, so that wasn't part of the original?
No.
Any other questions? Make a motion to pay the bills. Second.
Artic Adam Marshall.
Oh, second then. Somebody has them. Roll call.
All right. Bassett?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Clipper?
Epstein.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, we got a special guest tonight. Roy Kluppenstein, our state representative. Pleasure to have you and you'd like just a few words of wisdom?
That takes me out. Well, it is good to be here and this started, Jim Schmidt gave me a call and told me there were several projects up here as far as the splash pad and the swimming pool and asked about funding. So I wanted to come and talk about the capital budget. Who in here has worked with the capital budget in the past? Or has no one worked with the capital budget? Okay, the capital budget is, the state has a two-year budget, a two-year biennial budget. And the first year of it is a general fund side. The second year of it is what they call the capital budget. And the capital budget, and these are my English words, no returning, no offense, is it just a way to reinvest back into communities that may not have the funding to do projects? So it comes every two years. The papers I handed out are from the last capital budget cycle. So they may change a little bit. The first page, if you look, it says eligible for state bond funding. The next page says not funded, so projects that cannot be funded. And then the third and fourth pages is just a copy of an online form, a single one-page form that may or may not change when we come out with the next cycle here. But these applications are typically due, I'm going to say mid-January. The Senate President, the Speaker of the House will look at all the application and they'll literally have thousands of them from across the state. They will sometime possibly April say who gets the money and the money will be available July 1st. They like you to have that project, that money spent in two years from when it's awarded. So there is roughly a hundred and fifty, and this is what has happened in the past, roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred million dollars available statewide. And I'm going to break it down by congressional district. There's ninety-nine state reps. So just take a hundred and fifty million divided by a hundred, a million and a half dollars is roughly what I would get to spend in my district, maybe up to two million. And that is for me to spend in Vanwork, Putnam, Pauling, in the southern half of Defiance County, which in one way you get two reps in Defiance County, so I don't know if you get twice as much money or half as much money from each of us, either way. And Jim and I work together on it. Well, actually, Jim Hoops, Representative Hoops, Representative Cross, and myself will work with Senator McCully to sort of decide what projects we earmark. So that's roughly the pool of money. What is it eligible for? You can read this, this, what's on here, but this is what I want you, I would rather you would do. I would rather you went online and look at the capital budget funding from two years ago for the Senate District One, Senator McCully's district, which would be Williams, Fulton, Defiance, Henry, you know, there's like eleven counties. Look at the projects that got funded in his district, which would include us three representatives, and that will give you an idea of what has been funded in the past. Some simple guidelines. And this is what I am told and there's very few exceptions. Most projects will never get over fifty percent funding. So if you have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project and you ask for four-hundred-thousand dollars, probably not going to happen. If you have a, ask for fifty percent and it gets funded, then you move forward. I can only talk from my experience from being in the commissioner's seat in Pauling County, but every two years I would learn something new about the capital budget funding. And I wish I would have known in the beginning, what I finally figured out in the end is if you don't apply, you don't get anything. So it took me a while to figure out what projects were eligible. Every cycle I would learn something new. One of the things I learned is a project less than fifty thousand, which you would be requesting twenty-five thousand dollars of funding, don't do it. It's not worth the hassle or the paperwork, believe it or not. So this is for like fifty-thousand-dollar projects and up where you can supply fifty percent of the funding. That's sort of the overview. When I talked to Jim, I asked him a couple of questions. My first question, hasn't went to bid and I don't know if you're cool in splash pad. If it's went to bid and been awarded, I'm going to have to ask Senator McCully, but it's probably not an eligible project, unfortunately. One of the things Senator McCully talked, and he was under the weather over the weekend, so I had asked him to come also because he could, he can give you lots more history and explain things. For example, if the pool could be done in two phases where one phase is the bid and the second phase can be put in the capital project site, you could possibly get some funding. I'm going to sort of stop there. I could talk a while on it, but do you have questions? Yes?
I do. So it's been put out to bid, but it hasn't been awarded. The other, some of the grants I've looked into, want you to, if you start the project at all, then you don't qualify either. Is that the same case of this? For instance, the old pool has been demoed?
That project, I mean, an old pool's been demoed, but that's been bid, awarded, and done. So that's no longer part of the equation in my eyes.
Okay.
So the new pool or splash pad, if you have not awarded the bid yet, I would say yes, it's eligible.
Just to be clear, you're working the capital projects portion of the budget this year, correct?
Correct. We would start typically, why isn't the commissioner's seat? We tried to have them done by the end of the year just because sometimes you run out of time. But I'm telling you, you've got till mid-January, the capital budget cycle in Pauling County. We encouraged all the villages and anyone else that was asking to try to funnel them through the commissioner's office. And why I prefer that is somebody has to prioritize the projects. And if we get six good projects and we only got funding for three, we would rather not draw them out of a hat. We would rather come back to the people and say, hey, who's most deserving or who needs it? For example, in Putnam County, Calida has got a number of grants for a public park. It is beautiful. If Calida asks for more money and there's another village over there that has not received money, I sort of lean, personally, towards the village that hasn't gotten the grant in the last two or four years. That was a long-winded answer, sorry.
So just to clarify, in this cycle, the funding for capital project, the capital budget will actually be dispersed in 2024?
Correct. Now, here's the next thing. Because of federal dollars, whether we want to call them a result of COVID or a result of a number of things. When we did the general fund budget, the state is very robust with money right now. And the way I understand it and look at it, there's another pot of money, seven hundred million. There was some attempts in the regular general fund budget to do capital-like projects and that didn't happen, which is good. But what I'm telling you, where the capital fund budget was normally a hundred and fifty to two hundred million, the state also has another pot of money up to seven hundred million dollars. If I was very optimistic and said they took that seven hundred million, call it five hundred million, and divided it by a hundred house districts, I would now have an extra five hundred, or five million to spend on capital fund-like projects within my district. That's unusual, but I want to throw it out there so you're thinking about it. Because if I don't have projects in my district to spend the money, trust me, somebody else will. And I would rather, whether it's three million, five million, or seven million comes back to my district, I want to have projects that are ready to fund and can happen. So there's another sort of extra thing out there that is different than normal. So I don't know if you have other projects. I don't know if by not going to bid yet with the pool, if we can maybe help fund part of that, unless you don't want money, but that's, you know. I, I'm just saying there's some unique opportunities right now, even outside the capital budget fund cycle.
Would that extra fund be, I guess, applied for the same way?
Great question. Because normally the capital, they sell bonds to fund these projects and the bonding requires certain requirements. Because that extra seven hundred million is cash, what I am told is the restrictions on it will be less, which means we can use it in a broader way. Now that will be defined most likely by the Senate President and the Speaker of the House, and we haven't seen that yet. And they continue to argue down there. But I'm optimistic they'll get it figured out. They'll divide it out by the districts and it will give us extra money. So it's capital fund-like. What I'm told is it will have a little broader use and maybe not quite the restrictions, but that money's already there. So there's two things. The capital, regular capital fund budget and then this extra pot of money that if it comes our way, start thinking. You know, the biggest restrictions on most folks, depending on, if you have a project you've been planning on for three years or five years and you already have forty, fifty percent of the funding, this is, this is a great, great way to do it, to get that rest of the funding.
So my understanding is your recommendation is that we should be more than likely working with the county commissioners for this?
I would. Now, the money will flow through the village of Hicksville because you're a political subdivision. I just say the county commissioners because they know the process and they're going to be feeding me projects and so is the city of Defiance. If you give me a great project or two great projects and I have six from the county, I'm going to have to call someone and figure out, okay, who needs the money? How is it best spent for the people in Defiance County? So at least, I would ask that you at least correspond with the commissioners and say, hey, we're thinking of a capital project. This is what it is. This is how much money we're asking for. What are you folks asking for? And it just helps on my end and it helps sell the project down there. Because if we call them and they say, well, Hicksville's got a great project, maybe you ought to fund that, then we go that way. Any other question? Any other questions on anything else that you've heard, seen, or want to know from the state? Don't make them too tight.
We can put together a pretty good list of projects, I think.
And the thing I recommend first is go online and look at what got funded in the past. And the way that capital budget works, as you look down that list, look at our area, but then look across the state because I'm just thinking out loud here. Things that draw people to an area and get them to spend money. The Rock and Roll Hall of, or the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, you know, the National Football Hall of Fame or whatever it's called, or maybe like a Huber House. You know, there's things that draw people into an area that increases the income, you know, the viability of an area. Those kind of projects also get some extra money. For example, those of you that are familiar with Camp Palmer, four-H Camp Palmer, sets in Fulton County, but it covers seven, eight, nine house districts with the people they serve. That's a project that may get a broader scope. But look at the list. That's where I would start if I was doing it, is I would go online and look at what got funded in the past.
Do they have the timelines online when things are due for applications?
That I don't know.
I'll check.
But feel free to reach out to me. Somebody in here has my card or if you don't, I have some.
I don't have mine.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Representative Clark this time? Just thank you for the time and thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for fitting me in. It was sort of a short notice and I appreciate your prayer and the farmers. I was looking at my schedule and think, if I don't get up there soon, I'm going to be booked out for a while. I appreciate getting me in. Thank you.
That's the only agenda, Boarding Commissions, revolving loan committee met September the 25th. Minutes are in the packet. Any questions on that? Got legislation tonight on that, Troy. Police and Fire Committee met the 25th. Minutes are in the packet. Any questions on those minutes? Okay, and then the Finance Committee met the sixth. Minutes are also in the packet. Any questions for any of those committees?
Where are we at in regards to the Finance Committee? Where are we at as far as rebid goes with the pools, block gap?
It's all right there, I'm gonna, back there. On everybody's desk, the pool. One point zero two is a project.
Eleven one?
Yeah. One point zero four, it's got the dates and everything there.
So what are the phases that were broken out, phase one, phase two?
Phase one's the pool, the pool house. Phase two is a splash pad and then there's an alternate that just.
All of it together.
Is there, I guess, just to clarify the language in the bid documents, is it bid as though phase one is first, phase two is second? Or just as two separate pricing options?
Yes.
Okay. So refresh my mind, my memory, where the last two came in at?
Four point four, four point seven. Yeah, that's about right.
So we're still six, the investment's still six million away, or six hundred thousand away from the lowest bid?
Yes. But there has been, we're all discussing changes with the building itself. The parking lot is also an alternate. So technically, that goes into this project and puts it over our threshold. And then I've already had a couple of companies in the last week come and look at that parking lot and give us pricing on doing that. That might be something we don't even do in this project. It might just be something completely separate.
Are they also providing a number that they got both?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the Village Hicksville's website, it's got the link to everything on there as well. If you wanted to have a look at all that.
So based on this engineer's estimate, what I've seen, if things came in at the estimate, that would be three point eight, so it would still be financing one point three mil, one point three billion? And we're comfortable with monthly payments on that?
A lot better than two point three. Much better.
That's not what I asked. I was, we'll say Finance Committee hasn't met about budgets. Cory, I threw some numbers out there for costs around the pool. What, what new costs will be to run, so we have one overall, that kind of stuff too, to factor that in. We just got the budgets, most of the budgets, we don't have all the numbers for some of them, I think. So it leaves me to have maybe wages in on that one and.
I've plugged their numbers in for that.
Thank you, okay. And I think we're still waiting for one more. No, that last one?
He said he put it on my desk tonight.
Okay, that's what we have seen. I'm going to try and schedule a date with everyone's busy schedules, so. Yes, no confidence it can be before eleven one? Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're going to be at least twice before. Yeah. Okay. That's worked out for you. Oh, yeah. All right.
Phil Square, everybody. Okay, we'll move on to Administrator's Report, Cory.
Other than this, that we just talked about with the pool, I really don't, don't have much. We will start doing the leaf pickup in our different quadrants on Tuesday, the 10th. We'll start with, I think it's the yellow portion of the map, the Tuesday route. And again, a reminder that we are no longer taking grass at the recycle lot. We held the last bit of it out today. Other than that, you know, I had this, the pool stuff here that we just discussed. Unless people have questions for me?
The EPA's signed on. On the well, the well field?
Yeah, well, field, we'll officially go online this week. We've been doing water samples out there in three different locations, at the wells, at the plant, and then there's a tap out in the middle of the well field that we've been, the contractor's been messing around with trying to get a good sample there. Come to find out, EPA says we don't need that, that third sample there. So that went ahead and got buttoned up today. Everything got flushed out. All of our samples are good. EPA has signed off on that, so we'll go live here real soon with the new wells.
What kind of changes in water would the village residents expect during that transition? Like are they going to have any sediment or discoloration or pressure or?
They shouldn't have anything.
Because water, is the new tower open operational yet or is that still?
Nope, there's no water to add yet. There's not even any electrical to that yet. So next week, they are supposed to get all the electrical, all the underground put in. I don't know if it's a delay with AEP Caldwell, thanks, they're the ones overseeing all that. I think it's to go online in December, at the end of December.
Okay, question in regards to well field and the contract that we signed with Troyers last year. Is that written as though we need to bring legislation to renew that every year? Because it was renewable.
I suspect it probably says it automatically renews unless, but I don't recall off the top of my head.
I got rid of it. Usually write those so that they automatically renew unless there's notice given within a certain period of time. But that one, we might have...
I was thinking we had it where it was renewable every year. We had to pass legislation to renew it every year. I could be wrong there, but I was just curious.
While he's looking it up, anybody else got any questions for Cory?
Yeah, I'll have to look at it back in my office.
Yeah. I'll look at it and let you know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Cory? We'll go to Solicitor's Report.
First thing I have is Resolution 2023-23. Second reading by caption only. A resolution of Village Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering to provide professional engineering services for the Cornelia Rock Street water main replacement and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. I'll second that.
More call?
All right.
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
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 Third reading of Resolution 2023-23 by caption only. A resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering to provide professional engineering services for the Cornelia Rock Street water main replacement and declaring an emergency.
To move.
Second.
I'll second.
More call?
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
I got one question on that. Didn't we have that on the bills last time that Ron had us pull out or not? Paying that one?
It wasn't paid yet.
Okay.
And then next is the first reading of Resolution 2023-24 by caption only. Resolution of Village Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement. The A and B Tool, Inc., and Northwest Partnership, LLC are declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Second. More call?
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Second, third readings of Resolution 2023-24 by caption only. A resolution of the Village Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with A and B Tool, Inc., and Northwest Partnership, LLC, declaring an emergency.
To move.
Second.
More call?
Martin?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
That's all. Okay, any questions for Solicitor? Department heads, please chief.
I have nothing. I think you all should have the stats for the month of September.
Any questions for the chief? Fire and AMAs, Bruce?
If you have any corrections or additions or deletions on that flyer I sent around, put your name on it and swivel whatever you want down. Or have a question on... Taylor, you had the question of what are we going to do with that money? Flip that over, and the ballot is there. That's exactly what's on the ballot. It's just not, it spells out everything that we will cover, but it doesn't mean we have to do that. Follow me? Okay.
Looks good.
Looks okay?
All right. I think it does. I like this on the back page.
Yeah.
Is it the final draft?
I'm sorry?
Is it the final draft?
It would be if you don't have anything else.
My only suggestion is darken the text, because it is kind of hard to read.
I'm sorry.
Darken the text, because it's hard to read. If you look at this, it's...
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be a Mr. Bar thing. They'll have to do that for me. Also, I'd like to put out some yard signs, but I need to know which, I guess I could touch Cheryl. If you have any thoughts on that, too, give me a text, because I'd like to get it done ASAP. I'm not going to blanket the whole town with yard signs. I'm going to blanket the whole town with this ballot. That sheet right there.
You guys are going door to door, correct?
Yep. Yep.
You could just ask the residents at that point if they'd be willing to put a sign in the yard or not.
We should get the town covered. I'm looking at three days. We should be able to cover the town in three days.
Do we have signs from the past?
I'm sorry?
Do we have signs from the past, or do those have to be purchased?
At least they kept, they've had them in the past. I don't know if they kept them somewhere.
What, say yard signs?
Lovey sign from the past. I don't know if they kept them over there.
I believe early voting starts next week. Will we be able to get signs in and distribute it in enough time to catch everybody? If not, it just feels like a waste of money.
Yeah, I hope to start next week. You don't want to give it too quick, because people forget about it. They'll just pitch it over on the end table, and away we go.
She makes a real good point, because if they go and cast their vote...
Right, I'm not referring to these. I think you'll be able to get these in plenty of time. I'm talking about yard signs.
Oh, yard signs, yes.
Those can be, you know, a bit expensive. And if we don't get them in in time and distribute it in time, doesn't, I don't know that it'll be worth your money.
Well, if that's what we're looking at, then we don't have to put yard signs up. We'll just go door to door and concentrate on that.
I don't want to get people confused, too, because there is another 911 countywide levy going on for 911 services.
Correct.
That's for county-based stuff, and then you have ours. I know there's other communities out there, but for us right here, this is important. So we'll put down that.
We'll hustle the loans as quick as we can.
You know, when you're passing these, do you have an idea when you want to start getting these out? Do you have a set date with them?
I'd like to, we got a meeting next Monday. I'd like to start next Tuesday. And like I said, I don't want to get them off too quick. People just toss them on their end table and not pay attention to it. So keep it fresh in their minds.
And we encourage people in that community, if you have questions in regards to the levy and the money, you know, reach out to us.
Yeah.
Actually, we'll ask your, the department will be the answer to your questions.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Okay, thanks, Bruce. Park Director. Cheryl Fiscal Officer's report.
You have the fund status and cash summary of revenue and expenditures for the, for the year. September utility and income tax report. And I also need to know if you've all looked over your health plan. If it's good to go, I'm red now. We're not going to add anything or subtract anything.
Did you happen to ask about, I think Troy mentioned, the trail usage out on the well field?
I've built it.
It's covered by the park already.
I just wanted to make sure it is double-checked that it is. In case something happens out there, somebody goes down or something. But I would think it's part of, considered part of the park that would be covered. But you may want to make them aware that we got other facilities.
When I talked to him, he said we wouldn't have to make the adjustments to it until you start putting things out there. If you, like that benches and all that, that you wanted covered specifically, we have to list it on the policy, but they're not there yet.
You're saying in terms of property?
Like property damage you're talking. He's talking liability, like...
Yeah, that's covered.
Somebody takes a header out there or something.
Do we need to designate a park for that to be covered as a park? Or is that no different than like the three-acre lot we own out on?
On the drive.
You did not say we had to do that.
Okay.
You got coverage order figured out? Necessity to do it?
Okay.
I mean, it's great that income tax is up 15%.
And did you have a quick question about the fire trucks and stuff? Did you get to see that list, Bruce? And update our fire truck with the new one? Got rid of the old one?
Yes, we got, we rid it. It went through the bid. What is that, Mark, go ahead?
Gov deals?
Yeah. Went through the bid system, sold it. I think we got somewhere around neighborhood 27,000 for it. And that paid for the new one.
Okay. Any other questions for Cheryl?
For the renewal of it?
Because it's a new contract, a new contract.
Yeah.
And then you can do legislation?
No, I can just come bring the legislation.
Do the best, okay.
What's his status in the solicitor position?
I offered to the individual a week ago. I think I emailed you guys, right? She's going to get with Troy. That hasn't happened. It's going to happen here soon, right?
Scheduling it. I'm going to make a conversation.
Okay. The person had a few questions.
Okay.
And I didn't want to...
Sometime this week.
Yeah, so it's...
Close. I had a question for Mark. Give us a sec. The new tower at the fairgrounds, right, the Mark's Tower? Is that operational yet, or is that still...
They're still doing finishing. They're still doing finishing touches on it. Where they won't flip the switch until the final contract is signed. So there's still some language stuff that we've been working out details on.
I just, I knew it was up there, and I wasn't sure I might...
Yeah, they've got it building out.
Get better coverage over here, so...
Right. So...
I don't have anything to report, so...
I had another question. I was here last week and thought I'd ask some questions. Sorry, two weeks ago. Have we got...
His name in a minute. Try to get his name in a minute.
Have we got any farther with the industrial park property?
It's, I mean, there is progress on it, but nothing since the last time we talked about it. At least nothing that's come across. I haven't heard it, thank you. Yeah, nothing. They used to be copy on emails and stuff.
I know Eric had made something, you know. She said she was working on it when she went here.
Yeah.
And we got it.
She said it sounded, the last meeting, she said it sounded close. Yeah. Depends on whose definition it was.
I think the last meeting, I said the Halloween thing.
Yeah.
Four to six.
Yeah, four to six.
Yeah.
On the 28th.
Yeah.
So three Saturdays from this Saturday.
That's your, right, you guys are doing here?
Yeah, we're going to do a Halloween.
They're going to start their Halloween back at the firehouse.
Do you have the hours for that?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the hours for that?
Five to seven.
Five to seven?
Five to seven. Five to seven, probably.
Okay. I don't have anything else, anybody, anything else needs come before this council. Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
More call?
Anything for me on here?
They're dull.
Oh, Joe. Got anything? Joel, right, right?
Yeah.
You got anything you want to say?
No, I just follow up on what Clipper asked a few months ago. Would be pretty slick, be watering. Things are in the process of getting something in there. Just wait.
Okay.
Working with Baker and Associates, so I've worked with the giant in the past. Let's see what we come up with.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Start talking to the engineer a little bit, talk to Troy about it. They're a little expensive, might start a little... It's down the road, but I still want to get prepared for it, you know, so...
Second.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
I got another question. It's not sure, yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Egley?
And Cory? Need to adjourn, so these dates here.